I'd sooner have somebody that's been in the line of fire lately than a guy like-
Shayner, here. Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Okane?
Here.
Please stand for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with original justice and moral.
Shane Houston, please come forward, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board.
Yeah, my name is Shane Houston, I'm from northeast Nebraska and I've always been active, I actually have a degree in sports management and business administration and the main reason to be involved into the Parks and Rec Board is just to be more involved in the community, so I figured that'd be good for personal growth and also just maintaining and gaining better relationships here in the community. And I have no past experience on any boards, so, but I think I have a lot of good qualities from my experience from sales, problem solving, customer service, and things like that, working in outside sales, that can help me bring new ideas to boards or help solve any problems that Parks and Recs might be having.
Yeah, the good news Shane is many of us had no experience on boards, so that could be a plus for you just for what you outlined with the experience you've had in the workforce, so I'm glad you made the application, I think we have three vacancies?
Correct.
So it'd be nice to fill them with good applicants.
Yeah, because I think I made the application, I think March or something like that, of early this year, so it's been nine months, I was like, okay, you guys do keep that on record, so I'm glad that you guys reached back out to me, so I'm still interested, that's why I'm here.
Yes, well, thanks.
Where's Barco at now?
We are on the corner of Floyd and Outer Drive, so up Signal Hill, there's like four other office spots.
Okay, yep, yep, okay, other question?
No, appreciate your interest and willing to take a, take a chance, you know what I mean, and apply and do whatever you can to better the community, I think it was cool. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, we'll let you know. We'll go to consent agenda items three through 11B today, are the consent agendas, you can consider these items passed unanimously unless a separate roll call vote is requested by a council member, if you want to speak on an agenda item, please come up to the podium as I read that item, if you want to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns, remember to always state your name, I will move the consent agenda. Second. Three is the reading of the December 2nd City Council Minutes, four is a resolution accepting the annual comprehensive financial report.
Randy Corona, interim accounting and reporting manager, today after five months of hard work from city staff and our auditors, we've completed the fiscal year 2024 annual comprehensive financial report, and we have Andy here, Andrew Greis from Bergen KDB, and he's going to share with us some key highlights of this year's audit.
Thanks Randy. I have a PowerPoint presentation to highlight our report as well as our financial analysis, so hopefully can bring that up here next. Okay, wanted to start by highlighting the independent auditor's report included in the city's financial statements, that report talks about our role as your auditor as well as the role of management, in that the financial statements are the responsibility of management, and it's our role as your auditor to come in and provide assurance through our audit opinion as to whether those financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects. Happy to report that we're continuing to provide a clean or an unmodified opinion, which is the best that we can give as your auditor. We also have two other reports, one being a report in accordance with government auditing standards, this report talks about internal control over financial reporting, and we are required to report any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses that come to our attention as part of our audit procedures, we had one finding this year, so whenever there's a proposed adjustment to the financial statement or any errors identified related to the prior period of financial statement, we do have to recognize that in terms of an internal control finding, and that was the one finding that we had here for 2024. We also tested four major federal programs of the city in accordance with the single audit, and we are required to take a look at the controls around compliance requirements for those programs, as well as determine whether any non-compliance existed in those programs for the year, and we had no findings to report, so no issues in terms of internal control or compliance. The last piece of reporting that we have is our I will legal compliance reporting, there are certain state statutes that we're required to report on, and the only finding that we had is in regards to deficit fund balances at the end of the year, so just acknowledging that there were some funds that were in a deficit position at June 30th, 2024. And then the last reporting that we have is our communications letter, that includes all required communication in accordance with audit standards, but also includes financial analysis that goes over some trend data for the city, and we start by taking a look at the general fund fund balance here over the last five years, and fund balance did increase here in 2024 to about $27.5 million, an increase of about 17.5%, and when we take a look at the measurement of financial health, we also take into account city council's policy as it relates to fund balance, and that's to maintain a minimum fund balance between 12% and 20% of expenditures, and fund balance at the end of the year represented about 35.5%, so the city is in compliance with that policy. Next, wanted to highlight general fund revenues here over the last couple of years, just to show the makeup of those revenue streams, taxes and assessments continue to be the most significant portion of general fund revenues, making up 69% of total revenues here for 2000, excuse me, 61% here for 2024 compared to 9% in 2023. There was a change in accounting practices this year to change the allocation of the property tax levy, so that did go, there was a portion of the levy that is going to another fund here in 2024, and that was the main shift that you're seeing between categories here between the two years. And the next chart shows general fund revenues in each of those categories, again, here in 2024, we did see an increase in overall revenues of about $921,000, part of that was a significant decline in taxes as it relates to the reallocation of certain funds, certain levies to other funds, and that was offset by increases in use of money and property, so that went from 3.7 million up to about $6.6 million at the end of the year with increasing interest rates and related investment income, intergovernmental revenues increased with the change in legislation with additional commercial and industrial replacement revenue, also sign increase in charges for services increasing from 11.6 million up to about $12.8 million with various charges for services, including an increase in ambulance charges here for 2024.
But our actual taxes between taxes and special assessments and uses of money and property, which I think is who you said, actually went down.
So, so all netted together was an increase of $921,000 in terms of the net increase overall.
But not all of that's property tax.
Correct.
When our citizens say we're collecting more property taxes, taking advantage of all of these increased assessments, that's not the case.
So there was an increase in overall tax levy as well, but that's across all funds, so this is just focusing on the general fund only.
Okay.
Next, highlighting general fund expenditures by function here, just to show that the allocation of expenditures by function has remained relatively consistent here over the past two years, looking also at the five-year history and expenditures overall, we did see an increase of about $4.4 million, the largest increase occurred in public safety, which increased $2.4 million with an increase in wage costs and health insurance, also repairs and maintenance costs, general government increased about $2 million with an increase in expenditures related to a new cost allocation planned, and other functions were fairly similar to prior years. Next, wanted to highlight the city's enterprise funds, these operate a bit differently, more like a business in that these are funded through user charges, which really should provide the resources needed to provide the related service, and the water fund here for 2024 did experience a surplus of about $4.5 million, and the results of current year activity was an increase in unrestricted net position, so that's the financial measure there in terms of the available resources for future capital needs, operating needs that increased to about $15.8 million here for 2024. The sewer fund also experienced a surplus of about $13.8 million, and after considering non-operating related items, did see an increase in unrestricted net position, going from $16.5 million to about $21.7 million here for 2024. Solid Waste Fund did have a deficit this year of about $232,000, and as a result, did see a decrease in the unrestricted net position, decreasing down to about $2.7 million at the end of the year. And the next fund highlighted here is the Airport Fund, and this fund has experienced some significant deficits over the years, was about $4.6 million deficit here for 2024, and after, again, considering the non-operating items, ultimately landed at $2.6 million deficit, ending unrestricted net position compared to a negative $2.5 million in 2023, so again, as these enterprise funds really should be funded through user charges and should be at least breaking even, continuing to recommend that city council closely review those activities of the Airport Fund. The last two slides we have relate, again, back to taxes, highlighting tax rates here for 2024 at 15.765 compared to 15.42 in 2023, but overall has been fairly consistent here over the five years presented in terms of the tax rate, and did see an overall increase in tax levy in 2024 from 52.7 million to about 54.3 million here in 2024.
Some of that can be growth as well.
Sure, yep, yep, absolutely, and did not grow at the same rate as expenditures here for 2024. So that's a highlight of that financial analysis and our audit results, and just, next, I'd just like to open it up for any questions.
Just to clarify then, that the 54.263 is not due to the levy, a big increase in the tax rate?
Both, because you had the increase in levy.
But not enough to cover all of it?
The entire increase in expenditures, no. Yeah, the expenditure increase exceeded that overall increase in levy.
Thank you very much. Five is a resolution authorizing payment to Halstein, excavating for 30th Street and Pier Street area storm sewer improvement project, six are actions relating to boards and commission, A is a motion correcting the date of the term expiration for Carina Pind, Pedrosa, inclusive Sioux City Advisory Committee, B is a motion appointing and reappointing Sam Wagner to the Planning and Zoning Commission Board of Adjustment, seven are actions relating to grants, A is a resolution approving a grant agreement with the Department of Housing and Urban Development for continuum of care coordinated entry funds, B is a resolution approving a grant agreement with the Department of Housing and Urban Development for continuum of care homeless management information systems funds, eight are actions relating to agreements and contracts, A is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to Hydro Clean for the water treatment caustic cleaning project, B is resolution-
Mayor, I have a question on this one, I'm not sure who's going to answer it, but I think they asked for five, you asked for five, or you sent out five bids to vendors, five vendors, there was one that refused, or was interested but refused to participate because of the 10% bid bond, but then, and I might be reading this wrong, I've been reading a lot of things wrong this week, so, but the one bid that is Hydro Clean, it's, I thought it was 10% of the bid amount, but the bid bond looks like it's for the full amount, am I reading that correctly, shouldn't it only be 10%?
That's the contract, if it's in here, it's the actual contract bond.
Well, it's for, yeah, but it's for like $34,000.
Yeah, but that-
Is that a different?
Yeah, it's a, the bid bond you never see, when it comes to awarding today, they always put the contract bond in, so if you look at that, it says contract bond.
Not bid bond, okay, all right, that's what I wanted to clarify, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
B is a resolution approving a contract to pinroll construction for the Zenith Water Treatment Plant New Riverfront Well Project, C is a resolution approving a motor vehicle lease agreement with Sulan District Health Department for the use of one Chevrolet Traverse, D is a resolution approving a trans joint participation agreement with IDOT for the supplemental shortfall funding for the purchase of one light duty bus, E is a resolution approving a contract to Bainbridge Construction for the Floyd River and Plywood Trail Connector Project, F is a resolution approving a contract to Barcon for the South Mulberry Street Improvement Project, G is a resolution approving a pipeline license agreement with BNSF Railway for the Nebraska Street Water Main Replacement Project, N are purchasing, A is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Skydio for the purchase of a drone for the use by the police department, B is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Hepner Consulting for the purchase of one IBM server and related hardware and software, 10 are applications for beer and liquor licenses, 11 are board commission and committee minutes, anyone to be heard on any of those items?
Mayor, I just wanted to share on 8E for that Bainbridge construction contract, that was for the Floyd Riverfront and the Plywood Trail Connector Project, I just received an email from the Sulan Trails Foundation, a representative that sits on that, that just wanted to express overall their, the entire foundation, their appreciation for the city council, their dedication to trails, willingness to work toward those ends, look for different funding mechanisms to make all of them happen, because they, they met recently as a foundation board and just are very impressed and encouraged and appreciative of the work that we have done and city staff as well, and so I just wanted to pass those words along, so.
Passes 5012 is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the 29th Street Reconstruction Project, I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearings now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 5013 is a hearing and resolution approving construction documents for the West Street Bridge Replacement Project, I'll move that.
Second.
Hearings now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 5014 is a hearing and ordinance establishing the connection fees for the city sanitary sewer service for Broken Kettle Road Sanitary Sewer Extension Project, I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearings now open, anyone to be heard?
How's it going?
Good.
So, thanks for having me, I am Keith Raddick, I own 3503 Broken Kettle Road, that's where I live, of course, 10 years ago, we had discussions on the asphalt project on this road, and I had brought up in Public Works if we should just do the water and sewer at that time, we did not, so we did the asphalt, two years later, the water line broke, we had to redo the entire half of the street and do the water line, then three, four years after that, now we're doing the sewer line, so it's slightly frustrating for the neighbors in the area, I got to hear a lot of the complaints, being the-
I'm sure, I'm sure, man.
-the local government representation of the area.
We get to hear something about the supervisors.
Yeah.
I think we're way ahead, but go ahead with your story.
So one of the challenges I have, if you go from where the sewer connects to where my property is, which is the last on the list, it's 480 feet, but yet the line was done for almost 960 feet as it went all the way down towards 3410 Broken Kettle, 3420 and 3410 both put in pump systems recently, probably didn't want to connect at that time, so I'm assuming that's why they're not on the list of properties being assessed. Another issue I have is an 8% interest fee is quite steep, it should probably be more like 3%, the, in 26 years, when the usable life of my septic system is done, my tap fee would be $167,157, which is more than what this project is.
It doesn't kick in until you tie on, does it?
The interest starts occurring from-
What's that?
The interest starts occurring from-
Well, that's a first, because it used to be only when you tied on that interest rate.
Yeah, from the date of vote, or not some time.
Well, it wouldn't be for that, but go ahead then.
So, what I would suggest to the council, I think the fee should be more like $11,300, and I think you should move the interest rate to 3%. I would also suggest that for at least maybe three residents in the area, they might qualify for housing trust fund type revenue source to tap in, based on their income, I think that at least three people in this area, if given that option, and maybe Ms. Wandershey could reach out to those, I don't know if you're still housing trust fund or not, okay, so I think that would be an option for those people to get in and pay that right away, that is my suggestion, my ask, I know there's another neighbor here, but that's all I have.
Helpful. Anyone else?
Should you see, Gordon, can I grab a, how far everyone?
Anybody else be heard? Okay.
He must be done.
All right, public hearing is closed.
Now you're the spokesperson as well, Keith. Gordon, do you want to reply to any of those or add clarification or any?
That's not the way it used to be.
Where is that stated?
Gordon Ferris, city engineer, I can't comment on the 8%, I mean, I know we have our rules for these assessments, and I was under the understanding that it was, once they connected, they would start to pay those.
So it was also your understanding that once it was connection, not upon the ordinance?
Right.
I know that's the way it used to be, because I know that's what I did, I had a septic tank, and when I hooked on, I had to pay like $10,000, I didn't hook on right away, and it wasn't any different, so I don't, I don't know where we changed that, but we can pass today and look into it, but I'm pretty sure I didn't pay some big fee, I paid what it was when it was assessed at that time.
So we'll go ahead and vote, and then we'll-
We won't do second and third, yeah.
Can I ask, is that, was it done to 960 feet, because that's where the plan tends to tie on in the future, when you do the Stone Park Boulevard, Broken Kettle?
We extended it as far as we could to get to those total, what, seven or eight homes, I can't remember which it was, at that point, there was, the next home too far out?
Because there's three other properties, 3420, 3410, and 3400, all in Broken Kettle that are within also reach of this line by this project that aren't on the list of properties divided to be assessed.
They would have to be within 200 feet.
Yeah, and it's, it essentially doubled the length of pipe.
If they're over 200 feet, they don't have to connect to the sewer line.
Or they're not assessed, they're not calculated in.
That's right, this is only fronting the, it's only for the properties fronting the sewer line.
The argument I'm trying to make is if there's only 480 feet to my driveway, where are we paying for the additional 480 feet past that? That's why I think it should be half the amount- No, 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 I understand what you're saying. For the properties there, and it should be a more reasonable interest rate or figured out after the time that you connect, so, thanks. Does that make sense, Gordon, I understand as far as the length of it, he's saying if he's the last-
He's the first.
So then it's going beyond his property?
That Briar Cliffs property, or driveway, somewhere around there, then it continues on up to his property, which is the first one, and then the next few properties, there's one across the street that we're connecting to, but they've already paid their fees, because they paid into a low-pressure system.
And so what is it going beyond his place then, or beyond his neighbors?
Six or seven more homes after that.
So rather than connecting to Stone Park Boulevard, you're going the other direction?
You couldn't connect them to Stone Park Boulevard, Stone Park Boulevard doesn't have the fall, we would, or pumping uphill.
Okay, so you want the additional 480 feet because you couldn't go the other direction?
That's correct.
Okay.
About a lift station probably, or something.
Yeah. Okay, that makes sense then, I appreciate it.
So our follow-up on this for second reading will just be, when does the interest start accruing?
And pursuant to law, you can charge from the date that the construction is completed, but the code says you may charge a reasonable interest rate, so it's a may provision, not shall.
Okay.
I just want to check mine, because I don't want-
Someone to be charged more if you were charged, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think-
So yeah, we'll get, we'll get an answer then for next-
We haven't done one of these since mine, but what the heck.
She's left her of the evils worth, possible.
A little more history on it is, you know, it was a city ordinance change that says you can't put a septic system in your front yard, you have to do it in the back, or you couldn't do it, something changed there, and of course, then there was a change where you can't put a septic system.
Could be.
Yeah, so essentially, it was the city ordinance that changed the ability to have the septic system, I was able to build mine, I think, the last year before the change, so mine will be the longest lasting need to be replaced one, so.
Well, they sometimes don't last as long as they think they're going to, that's why I hooked on when I did, so.
That is true.
All right, thank you, we'll not do second and third, we'll go to 15, a resolution approving a letter of understanding with Explore Sulan to provide tourism and convention and visitor bureau services and authorizing an annual contribution. I want you guys to know that you're on that committee, I'm not.
Second.
This is just for this year, not any, it has come in the budget in the spring for extra.
One-year agreement. Because it's calculated every year based off what comes in.
Well, no, the $100,000 is, has to be annually appropriated in the budget.
Correct. But the additional, or whatever, if there's a revenue share, that it's calculated every year.
That's the $221,000.
Correct.
Chris Fitch, Finance Director, we will need direction going forward on how you want budgeted for the FY '26 budget, so during the budget hearing, we'll ask for direction from council, if you want the calculation to stay as it is now, or if there's a change in the calculation.
Okay.
I don't think we want to fight that today, we'll just do what this and then move on.
No, that's fine, I just, we just need direction during that, at that time, to make sure we budget it appropriately.
Yep.
Thank you.
Well, we're already obligated in certain respects to do this.
Yes.
Yeah.
This, yeah. Yeah, today, yeah.
Last budget cycle.
Right, sorry to you, approved.
In the ordinance. This vote, so we can. That one passes 5016, the Sioux City Police and Fire Headquarters Art Sculpture.
Rex Mueller, Police Department, as you saw the proposal, we're kind of reintroducing this back in 2020 when Captain Lisa Clayes wrote the Gilchrist Grant that received funding and found a very prominent local artist who kind of took this project and ran with it, we found that we really didn't have much public support for the sculpture as was, we have since withdrawn from that and found a sculpture company in Minnesota, Kimball, Minnesota, that is really willing to turn this project into what we wanted originally, and that's representational imagery, a turn-of-the-century patrol officer and a child to just represent that bond community and the police department, and I think I had some images of some existing sculptures that they've done for other municipalities, they're very good, and I think this is just a positive change, I think it'll be much more well-accepted, and any public art that we can have downtown would be positive, I've been working with Nicole on refining the MOU with the friends of the Sioux City Police Department and the sculptor to ensure that we have all insurance and funds to care for the sculpture moving forward, placement would be right outside the front doors of the police department, plenty of room on that sidewalk, and we'd like to see this project finished so we can show the Gilchrist Foundation what the results of their funding of this project will look like.
Going to get the cop to look like Joe Frisbee, or are they-
Actually, is that a request?
No.
I'm sure it would be for Joe. I mean, are you going to try to find an older officer to actually, or is it, are the-
We actually, we actually have a really great image of an old beat patrol officer that's included in that, so we have- So we have this historical image that we're going to pattern it after. The sculpture company, they say, send us your badges, nightsticks, equipment that you have, we're going to send them some stuff out of our museum so that they have exact references. And this is going to be a custom item. It'll actually be made to look exactly like officers and their equipment did from Sioux City back in the day, so.
Well, I'm, I'm the wrong guy to ask because I grew up with even beta every time I went downtown, so I, that's the, I, I'm not the guy to ask. You guys should choose that, but.
Yeah, this will be a late 19th century officer. So the whole point being that back before automobiles, the guy that walked the beat that everybody and his neighbor kind of encapsulate our mission state.
Well, some members, you remember them, right?
What's that?
I, I didn't know if you recalled those officers.
Back in the 1900s.
Back in the.
Just, I wasn't sure.
I'm going to remain silent on that. I'm not going to get in on your joke, Councilman Waters. I'll stay away from that.
Yeah, plead the fifth. Plead the fifth.
That's right. I will be pleading the fifth.
Yeah, I, I, I don't really pay much attention to him either, so you don't have to.
Uh huh.
I was, I was happy to see this resurrected, although, and correct me if I'm wrong, I, I remember you showing me a rendering of, of your original idea for a sculpture, which I thought that you had had some say in the.
No, that was, we had, from the beginning, we wanted representational art. The, the local artists who, who we were working with wanted to take it in a different direction and it was, it was a very interesting piece.
That was that super modern.
Yeah, very, very abstract and I thought, I thought with the explanation was very, very neat, but I, I just don't think it had the public support. And I think going in this direction is, is going to be more acceptable to the public and we've got a nice spot for it. And again, we have.
It felt its own story through the art.
Yes, we'll have a, we'll actually have a plate that just describes the purpose for it and our mission statement as a department and I think it'll just be a nice addition to the downtown area. And it'll kind of reflect off of our, our public safety memorial that's right in front of City Hall, so.
I'm glad the authenticity, they're using like actual artifacts, make sure we get the insurance on them and get them back, but.
This is not an off-the-shelf piece. This will be completely custom.
That's nice.
I really, I really like your purpose statement so much, I'm going to read it.
Sure, go ahead.
Is that all right?
Yeah, absolutely.
I think it's great. I don't know who wrote it, but it's well-written. Says, "Art evokes a great many feelings from those who take the time to appreciate it. In its purest form, art evokes emotion, prompts discussion, and unites individuals. This sculpture was created with the unique goal of bringing citizens and the police together as one. In Sioux City, public servants will continue to seek the involvement of citizens through dedication, honor, professionalism, and respect. This artwork will stand as a monument to the important relationship between community and public safety. It reminds us all that dialogue between public servants and the people they serve is ongoing and important. The Sulan community exemplifies the significant role that kindness plays in unifying all citizens under one goal." That's brilliant. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, good job.
I have one more question because your building is police and fire and I'm certain that there probably would, the fire department would probably like to do something similar down the road. Is there room on the sidewalks for them to do one as well if they choose to go get a grant?
I'm sure there is. There's quite a bit of, I mean, this is going to have a limited footprint, so, you know, if you look at where the retaining wall juts out kind of at a 45 from the building and we've got some landscaping there, that's a, a pretty good plot of, of space. If they would ever want to do something, I think there's plenty of room to do so. And I think they, if they did something similar, I think they'd complement each other.
Yeah. No, I just want to make sure. Okay. Thank you. Any citizen concerns, please come forward to the mic. Seeing none, we'll go to council. Mr. O'Kane?
I am just going to get on the soapbox for, for one minute because on my way, leaving West High.
You have three minutes.
Leaving West High and, and getting here, I saw three separate clusters of emergency services. And when I was leaving West High, obviously it's during dismissal, there's a lot of traffic. There was a, a fire truck waiting to get out onto West 19th and there was about, with the lights on, about seven or eight cars that just drove right past and didn't let them in. So at that time of year where we rely very heavily on our emergency services and they have to be able to respond quickly, if you see lights, if you hear sirens, pull over and, and just let them pass. Again, by the save a lot, there, looks like there was an individual that was hit by a vehicle on my way to City Hall and then we had another ambulance and fire truck outside of the library. So again, that's just on a short drive from the west side of town to City Hall. There were three clusters of emergency services at that time during my, my brief drive. And as it gets slick and it gets cold, it's imperative that they make it to the scene quickly. And if, if we can pull out of the way and, and give them our, our time, a little bit of time out of our day to make their lives easier, it'd be much appreciated. That's everything.
I don't have a lot today. The only thing that comes to mind is we had a question as to the delay on the trail system along the riverfront that runs over to, from roughly the boat dock over to North Sioux, over to Riverside. And I just want to make everybody, help them to understand that the bank is very unstable. I believe there's some undermining under the interstate through there. The Iowa DOT controls all of that along with the Army Corps of Engineer who governs the river and its banks for any kind of construction or any adjustments that are made. And I did see some rather strong comments on social media this weekend and I, our representative from the city answered, showing the post that we've shown that it's closed and this is why. There's no intention to make it inconvenient for folks. We don't have any way that we can, you know, kind of get the Iowa DOT to work faster or longer hours or find their budget. It all has to come in because this is an emergency fix. They weren't planning on that in their budget. I don't know if they're getting emergency funds from somewhere. Again, we're not privileged to that. But they do know that we want it open and our citizens want it open and they want it open too. But again, we work with them, but they don't work for us nor do we work for them. We work together on projects and we have a great working relationship, but we cannot speed the process up any faster. And so the point that I made, just trying to respond to say is, this is who controls it, this is who's in charge of that project. Safety is first. They can't just go in there and start digging up things. They have to go slow, they have to engineer it, it has to be stable and safe. And we've got 90-something miles of trails in and around Sioux City. I think 24 named trails altogether. If it doesn't go exactly where you want it to go, you know, sorry, there's nothing we can do about it, but next year, I'm sure it'll get fixed and as quickly as, as they can get it done. So there's still some, you know, issues with flooding here and there around the community, but believe me, the parties who are responsible, the entities who take care of it are doing their best to get it done.
Mr. Waters?
Um, had just wanted to give a shout out to Ron Keeney, had worked on a thing for me with a citizen that had come forward with a concern and it was addressed and they were much appreciative, so wanted to give him a shout out. But then I also wanted to encourage anyone listening or paying attention to get out to the NAI volleyball. We got some action tonight as well as tomorrow night, the championship. So pretty exciting action down there. What time is the game tonight? Five? Five and eight. So at five and eight is the action this evening and then the championship round will be tomorrow. So if you haven't made it down there, make sure to go down there. Whether your team is in it, whether you're following any of those teams or not, it is really fun to go down there, grab a ticket and be able to catch some of that action. It's really fun to cheer on the different teams or pick your favorite if you don't have an allegiance and just go down there and watch some of that action and encourage those individuals that are playing because a lot of them worked extraordinarily hard to get to this level and to win a national championship is a huge deal. And so we as a community want to show up in any way that we can to just not only welcome them to our community, but also cheer them on while they're here. So thank you very much for all the staff that's been working that as well as all of the sponsors that make it possible. So it's been pretty enjoyable. I've been able to go down there a few different times, but hoping to get down there tomorrow as well. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Mr. Moore?
I'm pleased to find out today, we met Nancy Lee, our Equity and Diversity Coordinator, and that position has been reassigned to the Human Resources Department. And it was good to meet Nancy. Some of us, the mayor and, and I and a couple of others met her before the council meeting started and I'm just really pleased that that position has been filled and I expect a lot of good things to come from that. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Move where adjourned? Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Chaney?
Aye.
For my dinner. Before this. You want?